Okay.
Okay, counsel, it's seven P M on August the twentieth, twenty twenty five. I call this meeting to order. Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance? Okay, up next, we have roll call. So we're gonna have to do a verbal roll call. Um, I think we're stuck.
You're not on. Okay. Counselor Carson?
Here.
Counselor Jackie V. Hill?
Here.
Counselor Krebs?
Here.
Mayor Coleman?
Here.
Counselor Hensley?
Here.
Counselor Jan V. Hill?
Here.
All councilor present with Counselor Dominguez previously requesting to be excused and his absence is excused.
Okay, thank you. Up next, we have the agenda approved. Counselor Jan V. Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve the agenda as presented, excusing Mister Dominguez from the meeting.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second. Is there any further discussion? If not, Ms. Martinez will take your voice vote.
Counselor Carson?
Yes.
Counselor Jackie V. Hill?
Yes.
Counselor Krebs?
Yes.
Mayor Coleman?
Yes.
Counselor Hensley?
Yes.
Counselor Jan V. Hill?
Yes.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Up next on the agenda is the citizen comment section, segment of the agenda. This is the portion of the agenda to where uh, those of you who've turned in comment cards, we will uh, have you come up to the podium and you're able to uh, speak. I do ask that you keep your comments to within three minutes. If you're still speaking at the three minute mark, I would politely ask you to end your comments so that other people will have an opportunity uh, to speak. We do not clap, we do not um, yell or cheer or anything like that because we want to make sure that everyone's voice is heard. Also here at City Council, we practice civility, being respectful, mindful, and thoughtful of all comments that are made. Uh, we ask that everyone uh, follow our civility guidelines by making sure that you are thoughtful and respectful and mindful and sticking to the time that's on the clock. Uh, once the clock expires, uh, we will not uh, allow anyone to continue. We do not allow for you to say, I want to pass my three minutes or my two minutes left to someone else that's not allowed as well. The other thing is we do not go back and forth uh, in conversations or respond to questions at this time. However, if you bring up a, up a comment or a question, our city attorney or our city manager, uh, they may respond. If you hang around, um, you'll get to hear their reply, but council members will not be responding, replying, or making any comments uh, that you present to us. With that being said, we'll start off with the first person. We have a Senator Larry Crowder.
Uh, good evening. Thank you, Mister Mayor. Well, I'm here concerning the article in the paper concerning the drag queen talking at the library. I'd like to make a few comments on that if I could. And I, I will start out by saying that I will take an ad uh, portion of the paper that I seen that would, that caused me to consider this, believing that a drag storytime fit work very well with our mission and values. I thought it's about relevance to our community and I believe that relevance is demonstrated by the existence of the S O V pride itself. I will tell you as a fifth generation, I object to this because I do not believe that is the values of the people of the valley overall. I have no problem with gay people, gay pride, whatever else. But when you start talking about a woman, a drag queen talking to little kids' storybooks, if you've investigated and seen these, the storybooks, they are pretty explicit on what they say about uh, getting along, bullying, or whatever else, which all on the surface sounds like a good idea. But, but in my opinion, the drag queen would take the place of an educator, which people, which kids are taught to believe. When a teacher tells a student something that the student automatically believes that. So I, I think there's really a problem by trying to influence the, the, the students with the drag queen. I, and I do not adhere to the idea that it is a, a value of the valley. Now, I know Mister Suisse, I have some comments on there about the legality of the bill, and I do not dispute that. But the spirit of the bill is what, what I'm talking about. Now, you, you know, maybe illegal. What I would like to see is, the only thing in the article that I did agree with, that all the children there have to have their parents present. And I hope that is adhered to, uh, you know, when this drag queen is talking. But I will tell you, anytime you have a board that is unanimous on their decision, such as this library board, you have a board that is, is uh, inept. Any board worth its weight in gold will always have a dissenter. This board did not. So you got, you councilmen are responsible for the appointment of this board, and I think you should take a serious look on how they operate. And I think that is something that, that is uh, you know, in, in contrast to the way that we believe here in the valley. So I, I thank you for the time. That's about all I have to say, but I, I think that we should not in any case try and sway young people's minds with this type of malarkey. And that's all I have to say, but I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Up next, we have Chester Jones. Chester Jones.
Mayor Coleman, members of the Alamosa City Council. Thank you for allowing me to come up here for just a moment. I speak for myself and for Gary Goodwin, who co-pastors with me at Calvary Bible Chapel on the east side of Alamosa here. We must oppose the drug story scheduled for Friday, October, our August twenty ninth. It's controversial subject to cross the nation, and I know it is, but now here it is in Alamosa. I know that you've looked at this from many sides and that legally you have no choice but to allow this presentation on Friday in the library and that you will be polite and listen to me and others because of our First Amendment rights. The content of the whole controversy is strongly condemned by the Bible. In the flyer published by the city of Alamosa listing activities, the drug storytime is promoting as a time to celebrate creativity, imagination, and self-expression at a joyful family event. God sees it differently. He said that professing themselves to be wise, they became fools. And for this cause, he gave them up unto vile affections and gave them over to a reprobate mind to do things which are not seemly. And then I add, there is nothing in these words of God that lead to a joyful family event. In fact, historic evidence of this can be noticed in the story of Sodom and Gomorrah. It is the only wonderful grace of God that can change a person on the inside to think differently, to exchange vile affections for purity of heart. Jesus Christ came to this world to die for all sin, to make man right for eternity. He loves this world, including drug, our drag celebrities, but cannot accept their behavior which is unseemly. It is only the blood of Christ that can cleanse us from our sin. Jesus said, let the little children come unto me. It is in this influence of Jesus Christ that children truly develop creativity, imagination, and self-expression because we have been created by God as unique individuals, specifically male and female. God has never made a mistake in his gender assignment in your life or in the lives of your children. We all know there are forces out there that will lead us all into trouble. But we must protect our children from these forces because their minds are moldable and we have societal laws for centuries to protect our children. In my opinion, the public library is a place for children to come and learn and enjoy a healthy environment, free from all harm of all kinds. Those of us who have children would never dream of putting a fentanyl pill in their morning orange juice. And in my opinion, the children's book titled My Princess Boy and Julian is a Mermaid is a sugar-coated pill leading to spiritual death. I know as an Alamosa City Council, you have wrestled with this. I also suspect that several of you are in favor and some are not, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ruthie Brown.
Well, Ruthie Brown, Alamosa, live at seven eleven State Avenue, right? You know, I commend you all, first of all, for coming on the first Wednesday and the third Wednesday because I have wanted to come for a long time on those dates. And, and I, my intentions are always good, first thing in the morning, but by working twelve hours or more, I'm exhausted. But I'm going back to October when we first talked about whether the homeless camp should be closed or not. And it stuck with me ever since when Amanda Pearson got up and said, how wonderful that city council hired the experts to tell them what to do downtown. And you created something beautiful and awesome that everyone loves. I'd already spoken that night, so I couldn't say anything, but I've hung on to all the signatures of people that hate downtown. And they still hate it. It, a week doesn't go by that someone doesn't come into the green spot and say, what's going on with your downtown? We still hate it. We don't go down there. It's claustrophobic, it's ugly, it's filthy, you can't see the stores. So Amanda might have thought that, but there's a lot of people that didn't agree. So I, I want to make sure you, you take that to heart, even though it doesn't make any difference. Another thing I would, I would ask, and I didn't have time to get you pictures, but the city needs to look at their weed ordinance and um, adjust it mightily because it is not great for our town when you can spray a three-foot or four-foot weed and have it dying for the rest of the summer. And uh, it's all over town. Of course, I take pictures, but if it's not a noxious weed and it's tall, it should be pulled, period, pulled and gotten rid of. And um, last but not least, I've um, I've given up on asking for the bike ordinance to be uh, enforced. And I, I don't know that it's enforced anywhere, so take it off the books. You can't tell me if I get hit by a bike rider on, and, and one of your city employees watched me this afternoon almost get hit. You can't tell me I have any legal rights if it's not posted. And I signed up for the drag story hour to go next Friday, so I'm educated. One big problem is, why did we even have to call it a drag story hour? Couldn't it just be storytime and, and let it go? I think that's really, really wrong. That, and, and I might love the storytime, I don't know, but I, I everything that's been done to promote it is, is wrong.
Terri Hammond.
Hello, I'm Terri Hammond. I live in Mosca, but I was asked by a young man named Dylan Larson to read this uh, letter from him. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on Hawaii Drag Queen Story Hour at the Alamosa Library is an issue. I realize that no minor will be attending the event without being accompanied by someone over the age of eighteen. However, I believe that holding this event in the Alamosa Public Library is an issue. The public library is where kids borrow books on dinosaurs and space. If that space becomes a stage for adult sexuality, I believe it will have a negative effect on all children. I believe this kind of event introduces sexual themes too early to children. As by definition, the performers use flamboyant adult sexuality like fishnets, heavy makeup, simulated breasts and, or hips to tell stories. Even if the words on the page are tame, the visual message is adult sexuality is for kids. That is precisely what Colorado's Child Protection Statute forbids. And he noted here Colorado revised, revised statutes Title nineteen, Children's Code Section nineteen dash three dash two zero seven. Uh, the Colorado Children's Code directs all publicly funded programs to act in the welfare and best interests of the child first. Best interest in Colorado case law has been interpreted to include shielding children from premature, premature sexualization and ensuring reading material is developmentally appropriate. There was a study by the Journal of the American Academy of Child and Adolescent Psychiatry in twenty twenty-two of around fourteen thousand nine hundred participants that found that early exposure to adult sexual imagery before the age of ten is associated with a two-point-one-fold increase in compulsive sexual behavior by age eighteen and a one-point-six-fold increase in depression scores. Uh, it is my position that Drag Queen Story Hour sexualizes childhood, contradicts biology in children, puts children at documented risk. As a father, my job is to protect my kids' innocence, and I hope that the Alamosa City Council as a whole feels the same. Here's a quick rundown of the books that may be read at the Drag Queen Storytime event. Neither by Arlie Anderson, A Gender-Fluid Bunny That Rejects Male and Female. Read, A Crayon Story by Michael Hall, A Blue Crayon Mislabeled Red, and Praised for Denying Its Physical Reality. My Princess Boy by Cheryl Killer Davis, norm, normalizes a boy in dresses and instructs readers to just smile and say, I love you, princess boy. Julian is a Mermaid by Jessica Love, ends with a child in full drag marching in an adult parade of sequins, pasties, and fishnets. Those four books contain adult sexual concepts, identity rejection, adult cross-dressing parades, and the instruction that any questioning adult is a villain. Uh, our ancestors built this valley with plow and prayer, and they counted on us to keep.
Thank you, Ms. Hammond.
Thank you.
Ms. Stephanie Jones.
Oh, and thank you for having me here. My name is Stephanie Jones, and I'm here to address also the library situation with the drag storytime. However, I'm going to address um, liberty and justice. I understand that the librarian was speaking about the rights of this person as to the content and who was going to give it. But I think that we overlooked the rights of the children. Because the Association, the American Library Association states that in a public library, you cannot keep anybody from anything, especially minors for any reasons. So my concern is the teenagers. They're allowed to come into the library, they have their library cards. They're allowed to get any book they want, including sexual gender books. However, they're not allowed to come into this thing without a parent or an adult. A lot of them haven't even told their parents. And I think, you know, that they make it clear and viol, it's, we're in violation of Article V, and you can look it up. It's the American Library Association, Article V. And what it says is, it opposes any efforts to restrict access based on age policies and procedures preventing minors from accessing any or all resources and services that adults violations with the A, with the A L A and their governing bodies should not use age as a reason to avoid potential objections, not acquiring materials, or because minors might access them. If they access them through their library card, they should be able to access them even after hours. So Article V of the Library Bill of Rights, which comes from Congress, states you should not be denied or abrogated because of origin, age, background to the use of anything that the library has. It is a free access to all services, materials, facilities, and unrestricted use of everything that the library has to offer. So therefore, we are in violation of Article V, and it is federal, not state. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Ms. Judith Wright.
My name is Judith Wright, and I would like to thank all of you for your service. I feel any programming at the public library that requires an adult for eighteen-year-olds and younger is inappropriate.
Thank you. Ms. Kaye Jones.
I'm Kaye Jones. I'm from Mosca, but we do all of our business here in Alamosa. We go to church here in Alamosa. And uh, I would like to speak on the protection of our children. Uh, I do not understand why uh, the literature on this came through the parks and recreation. This is not recreation for our children. And uh, I would like to call this what it is. Uh, I read today that the laws, uh, the anti-sodomy laws were considered uh, discriminatory toward uh, these people, this group of people. But what about our children, our women and our children and young men who have been uh, targeted uh, by this group of people? And um, as my husband mentioned, uh, in the Bible, there's a million places, but in Second Peter two six, it says that God put Sodom into ashes, Sodom and Gomorrah. There was nothing left there. Making them an example to those who live ungodly. He deliver, he knows how to deliver the righteous. He uh, and the oppressed by the filthy conduct of the wicked, especially those who will are concerned with the lust of the flesh and uncleanness. And I would just like you all to consider, uh, I think we all should walk through fire before we see this thing happen. We should not be in favor of our children being harmed in any way. And uh, I just believe there is no good can come out of this. And I just hope that some way that we can find a way to not hold this event. And our parks and our recreation things should all be safe for our children. And I know probably most of you have children. And uh, I'm a, a mother, a grandmother, a great mother of like, a grandmother of like, uh, thirty people plus. And I want them to be safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Larry Dixon.
Hi. So I'm here to oppose having the drag story hour at the library. Many things have been said here already, and I'm, you know, I'm just gonna repeat them. But uh, it's just wrong. It's just basically wrong. It's unhealthy for children to be exposed to that kind of adult choice material. And if a person chooses to live a lifestyle that's alternate than a heterosexual lifestyle as an adult, that's their opinion. But don't push it off on children. I used to be a teacher and also have been a parent. And you know what it's like if you're a parent or if you have grandchildren even. It hurts to see someone, especially an adult, take advantage of your kids. I mean, it, that's, that brings out that Papa Bear in me, you know? It's like, hey, don't mess with my kid. And uh, so I'm not speaking for any particular child, but children in general here, that's, this is not healthy for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Mister West.
Just wanted to I have so much to say and so many wonderful things has already been said, but I'm gonna get right to it. These kids, I'm, I'm originally from Los Angeles. As, as of this month, I've been here for ten years. And I love it, and I love the people that are here and that came to speak. I've coached in South Central Los Angeles and Compton and Watts and Maxine Waters District and places like that. And I've been an advocate for children, so I made the Pilots Baseball Academy. And it was named after the Tuskegee Airmen. And uh, the reason why I did that is not just because that I'm trying to help kids play baseball, but I'm trying to uplift them with a lot of really inspiring stories. This is some of the pitchers of the Tuskegee Airmen and children that I've coached over the last thirty years. One of the things I'd like to tell you is the Little League motto is, I just, I trust in God, I love my country. I trust, um, I'm sorry, I, uh, I love my country. Win or lose, I will always strive to do my best. And the Tuskegee Airmen motto is, if you put your mind to it, anything is possible. And I can tell you, I have two hundred kids in colleges all over the United States. I have four kids in the major leagues and they're all millionaires. Uplifting children through positive reinforcement. Not everybody's gonna be a, a major leaguer or those kinds of things, but this is not uplifting children. My mother owned a, an auto, uh, I'm sorry, my mother owned a beauty shop in Los Angeles. I had an auto shop. My mother's shop was filled with um, gay people and my auto shop, I worked for the movie industry and there was lots of gay people. You know, one of the things my mother always told me, she says, uh, don't judge uh, gay people. They're God's children too. But children need, they need to be in a safe place with life skills that will help them, uplift them, and take them to a better place. Having drag queens, I've been accosted many times in my mother's shop with homosexuals and a lot of things that I've seen in Los Angeles. And I think that, I think this is a travesty and it shouldn't happen in a public library. And so, thank you for listening to me.
Thank you. So I'm done with the comment cards, and now we're gonna open up for comments for uh, people who are on Zoom. Ms. Martinez, can you uh, give the Zoom participants instructions on how uh, to raise their hand, uh, so we can hear their comments as well?
Yes, sir. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for public comment right now, you'll use the raise hand feature in the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you're gonna dial star nine. Hey, Mayor, I do not see anyone choosing to raise their hand.
Okay, since we don't have any more hands raised, I'm gonna now turn it over to our city manager and our city attorney for their um, comments or replies to any of the comments that were made earlier.
Um, thank you, Mayor. Just to add a little bit more information as it relates to um, how information comes up in this meeting. Um, the city attorney will share a little bit of information as follow-up to some of the comments. And then at the very end of the agenda is where we have council comments. And it would be at that time if council had any comments as it related to information that was shared tonight. So it is at the very end of the agenda. I know sometimes individuals don't wish to stay that long, and, and I have no idea if council will have comments. But I did want to make sure that I explained that that's why council doesn't comment back right now during this point of the agenda. And then um, I'll turn it over to the city attorney.
I just had a couple of things in, and Mister Crowder and Mister Jones kind of recognized the issue concerning the legality of the situation provided by Senate Bill two fourteen, which talks about nondiscrimination in public libraries. And uh, as was presented last week when this came up on council's agenda, the Alamosa Public Library has adopted a program policy in response to Senate, well, incorporating the uh, the thinking behind Senate Bill twenty-four two sixteen that specifically says the, the Alamosa Public, Public Library shall prohibit discrimination based, based on age, background, political or religious views, origin, disability, race, color, sex, sexual orientation. race, color, sex, sexual orientation, gender identity, gender expression, marital status, national origin or ancestry, in the selection, retention, display, use, or reconsideration of library resources." And that puts the library in the position of both following its legally required policy and addressing a request from the Pride Coalition to do the drag time story hour. So legally, and we went through this before, not a whole lot of wiggle room. And to Ms. Jones's comments and also Ms. Greitz's comments on the age, I was not part of that determination, but I did discuss with the librarian briefly whether there should be or where should be an age limit for requiring parent or guardian accompaniment of a minor. I believe the conversation from Maria Kramer, the librarian, was, "Well, 18 is an easy line to draw. We think it may be a very conservative line, but we'll try that and see what happens." So there isn't, there isn't a hard and fast way, as you can tell from a lot of the sentiments that were expressed this evening, it is important when you have children involved in something that could be potentially controversial, to make sure the parents are engaged and know what's going on and are on board with that. And where do you draw that line of a child who is old enough that you, that you don't need to make sure that that parental engagement is there? 18 may be high, but that's where the library drew it for this, at least this program. That's all I have on that.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so that's going to bring us to the next item on the agenda, and that's going to be ceremonial items, introduction of the recreation specialist. Mr. Rice?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. We actually have two introductions for you tonight, and very excited to introduce to you new, two new full-time employees. First, this is Jasmine Garbiso. She is outdoor recreation specialist. She started with us on the outdoor recreation side, but she, she is now filling a role where she does traditional recreation and the outdoor work with Shawna, half and half. She has a background from Adam State Athletics. She did some work for CPW. She's been a great addition to our team, and I'm still getting to know these two, but I'm just really excited what they bring to the table, so you guys can grill her first, and then I'll introduce Sage as well.
Okay, thank you.
Hello.
Feel free to tell us a little bit about yourself.
Yeah, so I actually originally moved to the Valley for a softball scholarship, and I was pursuing my degree in wildlife biology at Adam State, and I just fell in love with the Valley. I love everything about it, so I decided to stick around, and I'm really excited to continue my work with the city, and I'm even more excited to serve the community I love.
Okay, Counsel Henson?
Well, I would just say, I love your passion, your energy and excitement. It's very infectious, and welcome aboard.
Thank you.
And I too would like to welcome you aboard, and thank you for falling in love with Alamosa. There's a lot of things to like about our community, and it's staff like you who's going to continue to make this a great place and a wonderful community for others to live. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, also introducing to you our new youth librarian, Sage Parsons. Sage has a background in social work, and she's a CU Buff graduate, so she got a point there with me. She's filling big shoes, we all know with Holly, but I already have reports of what a wonderful job she did in her first round with the traditional youth storytime. Really pleased to have her. Maria's told us great things, so I'll let you guys talk to her now.
Hi. Yeah, my name is Sage Parsons. I'm a San Luis Valley native, moved away to get my education, and then moved home to raise my family. And we're back.
Okay, Counsel Cribbs?
Thank you. Just a very warm welcome, Sage. I've already seen all the great work you do at the library, so I'm looking forward to everything.
Thank you.
Okay, Sage, I don't see any lights up, so I'll wrap things up. You are the epitome of what we're trying to achieve here in Alamosa, where we do our best to raise our kids, where they can grow up, and if they decide to go away and study and to see them come back is a great reward. And I just want to thank you for going away, exploring, experiencing what's out there, but coming back and bringing back wisdom and knowledge for the future youth of our community. And also you get points with me for being a CU Buff.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. That brings us to the next item on the agenda, Proclamation, Overdose Awareness and Recovery Month. Here on Alamosa City Council, it's a team effort here, and what we do is we share in reading the proclamations, and that way each council person gets an opportunity to read the proclamation and present those proclamations to the people or the groups that are deserving of those proclamations. Tonight, we have Counsel Cribb, who's going to read the proclamation, and if we could have those who are here on behalf of this proclamation, please come up to the mics so we can allow you to say a few words if you'd like. So we'll allow you to make a few brief comments, and then Counsel Cribb will read the proclamation. And I've heard some of you all speak already, so it's really good to see you here today, but go ahead.
All right, thank you, guys. My name is Stephen Erickson. I'm new to this Valley. This is a subject that is very dear to my heart. You know, I am an overdose survivor myself. I'm in recovery now, but getting, bringing awareness to individuals and the community, oh, sorry, this is, it's a very important thing, and this can save lives. You know, a stranger, some stranger saved my life in Denver a few months ago, and it was through education and through, you know, community support and working together as a community to bring upon this education that I'm still here today, you know? So thank you, guys, for this proclamation. Anybody else want to say?
Hi, I'm Alex McDonald, and I'm the Region 18 Opioid Settlement Governance Council Coordinator. I'm here to help show support with the peers of the San Luis Valley, and I too am in recovery myself from opioids, and so I feel like this is a really important thing for our community as well, to get the word out there and, you know, share some knowledge with everybody and pass along the word.
Thank you.
Well, my name's Angela Harameel. I am the new peer support recovery coach for CRP program. I come from adolescence, addictions of substance use, and gang affiliation. I have been 25 years now rehabilitated. I have dedicated 10 to 11 years in Catholic ministries and community outreach, assisting those who are struggling and in need. My daughter and I have a small community organization, SLV Faith Fund. We provide emergency needs for all those that are in struggle and need. We assist with other agencies and organizations, so I've dedicated my time and my journey onto helping others. I just completed my criminal justice associate, and I'm starting my bachelor in a Catholic university, Franciscan University, building on into probation, preferably working with our youth. So I've been blessed to be on this journey.
Thank you.
I'm Jonathan Gable. I'm not originally from Colorado. I'm from Missouri. I come down here because of family. I work as a peer support professional with Valleywide Health Systems. I also oversee all the operations of the Freedom Wagon, and I also manage the sober living home SLV Recovery LLC. I am the senior peer there. And one of the big things I see that is an issue is stigma. A lot of people don't want to seek help because of stigma, and a lot of people push people away from help because of stigma. And so this awareness, I believe, is really important because it is an opportunity for us not only to reach out more into the community as a community, but to try to break that stigma so that more people will be looking for help, as well as when there are overdoses, people are not too afraid and run when they could be helping, calling law enforcement. We really need that unity. If people are too afraid of going to jail because someone's overdosing, there's way more chances of that person not surviving, and so awareness is extremely important, and that is why I'm here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Demannicore. I am also a peer support professional from Valleywide Peer 128. I too am not from Colorado, I'm from Arizona. I've been here for four years. I am also an overdose survivor. I am almost two years sober. I just finished community corrections at ATC in April and started as a peer support professional in May. I'm just here to help show support for something that I believe is very important for all of our community.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is McGay Penny. I'm not much of a speaker, so just thank you, guys, for your support, and everyone else, thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you all for the courage that it took for you to come up here. We, as city council and staff, are trying to do all we can to help reduce the stigma because we know that unfortunately in society, you have a lot of people quick to judge, but not given full consideration of the challenges and difficulties that a lot of people struggle with and deal with. So we want to thank you for having that courage to also help us get the word out about the importance of reducing the stigma related to recovery. Counsel Cribbs? So we're going to, we're going to bring the proclamation down to the group here in a few minutes after she reads it, okay? Okay, there you go.
Oh, it's on now. I'll be very gentle with it. Is it, okay. Overdose Awareness Month Proclamation. Whereas overdose deaths continue to impact individuals and families throughout Alamosa and across Colorado's San Luis Valley, regardless of age, race, gender, or background, and whereas overdose is now a leading cause of preventable death, and the San Luis Valley's rural nature, economic challenges, and stigma around substance use have further scab-a-ed, sorry, this public health crisis, and whereas many of these deaths are preventable, and increasing access to compassionate, nonjudgmental treatment, harm reduction services, and community education are key strategies to saving lives, and whereas San Luis Valley Behavioral Health Group, SLV Recovery Peers, and their regional partners are dedicated to reducing overdose deaths by providing substance use treatment, recovery support, and harm reduction services, including naloxone distribution and education throughout the six counties of the San Luis Valley, and whereas stigma remains one of the greatest barriers to people seeking help, leading to many struggle in silence rather than accessing lifesaving care, and whereas August is recognized globally as Overdose Awareness Month, offering an opportunity to honor those lost, support those who grieve, and raise awareness about overdose prevention strategies that can save lives in our communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Alamosa, Colorado, does hereby proclaim August 2025 as Overdose Awareness Month in Alamosa, Colorado, and calls upon all citizens, businesses, schools, and community organizations to learn the facts, carry naloxone, reduce stigma, and support recovery and prevention efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Go down, thanks. Okay, up next on the agenda, we have Consent Calendar A. Counsel Youngfield?
Yes, sir. Mayor, I approve. I move that we approve Consent Calendar A.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Good, thank you. The next item on the agenda, under Regular Business, Presentation from Outside Agencies, we have the First Quarterly Update on the Lead and Correspondent Programs.
And up to you, guys, if you want the whole team to come up or if we're being shy, it's up to you.
It's up to you.
Okay, I'll go first. Hi, everybody. So things are moving along. The good news is that we keep getting a few more diversions, and we're getting them from both MONI and APD, and that's just really exciting for us. That's one of the things we've worked hard for. Another thing is, some are slow, but they're starting to come in. We're working with about, I don't know, the last six weeks, we probably had 22 referrals, and we've got about 50 that we're working with as a group. I did want to introduce, and I know you just saw Angela, but she, this is like, your 17th date? Yeah. She's brand new, but we're excited that she's here, and her job is to work with our, our lead clients that we think would be helpful, but she's also funded through actually a state SOAR grant, and so she will be doing a lot of community work with all the peers, and she'll be putting out resources and talking to other people that aren't necessarily in lead. So she's kind of like community and to help the team out. And we've been busy doing events. I'm surprised how many events we really have going on. There's been some in every county. They've done the National Night Outs, they've done, yeah, Sunshine, so there's been about six or seven, so they've spent the day in the sun talking to people. So if you have questions, I think that's the main things.
Okay.
And you all remember Gail and Rita and Timothy, there you are, they're case managers, they've been around for a little while.
And I'll just jump in a little bit, I'm not sure if
And I'll just jump in a little bit, I'm not sure if Stephanie's covering any of this or not, so I apologize. But I just, since the whole team is, not the whole team, but a good chunk of the team is here tonight. You know, as, as we've shared, we're working on a transition of, of moving case managers to become city employees effective January 1st. And we've had several meetings, and I just want to express my appreciation. You know, it's an unknown. And when you go to work in an organization that, that has a culture that attracts you and, and certain things that attracted you, and then you're gonna become an employee of a different organization that may have a different culture and, and things like that, it's, it's, it's a transition. And it's something that we need to be very aware of. And I just want to thank everyone on the CRP team for, for very honest conversations. If there's been any concerns or questions, bringing that and, and engaging with us so we can try to make this as seamless as possible, especially for those who are working with case managers. And I also want to thank the city team. It's taking a lot of different hands in this, from a facility perspective, an IT perspective, finance perspective, HR perspective. There's a lot of different hands coming into this. And then Luke and Clarissa have just been amazing to work through this process and to make sure that the intent of the program and, and the values are being carried forward and, and all of that. And so I just want to express some appreciation as, as we make the change and everyone really coming to it authentically and, and making it the best that it can be. And I know we still have co-responder stuff to talk, talk about, and Sergeant Kinshue and Stephanie are there too, so I know there's more.
Okay.
Co-coresponders. So we, our numbers for the quarter were 134, that's obviously with follow-up. We had 12 jail assessments totaling 15.5 hours in the jail. In the last 90 days, we've moved three people out of the jail into treatment. We also helped Caneos County Jail move one person into treatment, and then recently Rio Grande moved one into treatment. And we also helped center, or in the process of helping Center PD kind of work on their first ECIC. So, kind of a cool thing for that area.
And in case you've slept since the time we explained what ECIC is, that's the involuntary commitment. So an individual that is meeting certain state requirements and can be a danger to themselves and probably needs to be committed. Stephanie's been helping the Town of Center, or the Center Police Department with that process as well.
And I'm gonna make a comment. Mr. Kinshue, did you want to say something and then I'll?
No, the only thing is, yeah, the team's very busy. We, when I first kind of took over, they were Monday through Friday, both of them working eight to five. We've since moved that, they kind of split the week, they, so we have seven-day coverage. Kind of helps with the jail, helps with both teams. So it kind of gives more, more coverage to the community as well. So they, they definitely stay busy and, and it's a very proactive team, so it's, it's very good to work with, so.
And I, I hope I can make this comment. I know there was an email that circulated about some of the great things Stephanie did that was beyond the call of her duty. Stephanie, I just want to let you know that we all read that email, and that is truly amazing, what you've been doing to help people even when you didn't have to go as far as you have gone. So keep up that great work, it means a lot. You're meeting people where they are. Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay?
Thank you, everybody.
Is that it? Okay, thank you all so very much, thank you. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Presentation on Property Tax Payment Plan Through Third-Party Vendor. We're fortunate to have with us our Alamosa County Treasurer and Public Trustee, Amy McKinley.
Good evening, Mayor and Council members. Thank you for allowing me to be here. You introduced me, Amy McKinley, Alamosa County Treasurer and Public Trustee. I do have a handout, am I allowed to give that? Okay. I will just keep one. Thank you. Again, I'm really excited to be here and I thank you for allowing me to be here. I have an important message that hopefully will get out to the public. Each county treasurer in the state of Colorado can elect to participate in this or not. I know that most of the counties are. I work very closely with the Pueblo County Treasurer, Kim Archileta, and she had gone to City Council and to her county commissioners, and I was like, oh, I should definitely do both of those things as well. So over the last two years, our legislators have been hard at work in the House and the Senate trying to change the way the statute is written for collection of property taxes. Basically, what that amounts to is they have wanted to change it from the standard deadlines of February, the last day in February for the first half, and the 15th of June for the second half, or a person can choose to pay all of it off by April 30th. But the legislators wanted to make it easier for the citizens to pay, dividing it into a 1/12 payment. That would not work for our software, and it would not work as statute is written. It would cost billions of dollars throughout the state of Colorado to do that, to adjust our software, to accept those kind of payments. And in addition to that, we would never have the opportunity to be made whole because now we have an annual tax lien sale, that's when investors can bid on the taxes, and that's when we are typically 99.9% collected to distribute to the city, the ambulance district, the mosquito control district, and all of the entities and schools, et cetera. So we would never be made whole and everybody would be short in their budget. So there is a company who has been around for many years, they're known as Autoagent. Their job is to be a neutral third party, and they handle almost all of the banks across the United States, from Wells Fargo to Quicken Loans, to just any mortgage company. I believe USDA even works with them, and we even have local banks such as Delmar Bank and San Luis Valley Federal that work with them. They pull a file from us every night, so it's real time, they know what taxes are due to what parcel, and then they feed that to all of the mortgage companies, and we get the payments just like we should. The middle of February and the middle of June, we usually have a, a few oddballs that come for April 30th. So they were already established, they already get the feed from the treasurer's office. They decided they could offer the 1/12 payment to the citizens, to the taxpayers, at a mere cost of a dollar per month if the customer signs up and uses an ACH, so an automatic debit from your checking account. Or you can do it with a credit card and be at 2.35% for that monthly payment. So ultimately, it's just a really good way for anybody living paycheck to paycheck, a retired person living on a budget, to spread those payments out. One ten, like, you can do, I think, 10 payments or 12 payments. If you have multiple properties in multiple counties, you'll sign up for each county. So ultimately, we have the information, it's on the Alamosa County website. If you'll just help me spread the word, that is my goal. So, does anyone have any questions?
Any questions? Counselor Jackie Neal?
I have a comment, I think this is great because I know a lot of people that struggle when it comes to property taxes paying that lump sum. So I think this is gonna be good for Alamosa to have that choice of spreading it over 12-month, over a 12-month period.
So the important part now, of course, is getting signed up as soon as possible so you have enough months to then cover that first half payment in February. And I do need to make a disclaimer, our Alamosa County Attorney wants me to make sure, you know, we're not endorsing them, we're just in a partnership with them. And if someone signs up and they have an issue, they would just contact the 1-800 number, so. Thank you all for your time.
We want to thank you for coming up here and sharing that information with us as well as the community. And I want to thank your staff as well because you all have been doing great work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, yeah, I should have brought my whole team because they're amazing too. I've seen all these amazing teams, I should have brought mine.
Yeah, you have an amazing team, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, that brings us to the next item on the agenda. Advisory Board Appointments to the Planning Commission.
Okay, Council, this is, you need to vote on this position. You did interview an applicant, you interviewed one applicant at your work session on August 6th. We just didn't have the voting for you that same night. So this is going to be, you'll need to vote. So there is the option to vote for the applicant you interviewed or for none of the above. So you do have to vote on this, it was established by your resolution. So if we can do that, and then when I get the votes back, I'll let you know if you've appointed this individual. And the applicant is Angel Bilon for the Ward Three position on Planning Commission. Hey, and after getting your votes back, you guys have voted to appoint Angel Bilon to the Ward Three position on the Planning Commission. So if I can just get a motion for that, that'd be great.
Okay, Counsel Yanvi Hill?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve Mr. Angel Bilon to the Planning and Zoning Commission.
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Please start voting. I think we got one that's probably stuck. There we go.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. The Public Hearing and Second Reading for Ordinance Number 17-2025, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa County for conduct of the November 4th, 2025 coordinated election.
Okay, Council, this is just your regular IGA that we do every time we coordinate with the county. There is no changes within the IGA, so if you just want to do a public hearing and then make a motion.
Okay, at this time, we open up the public hearing for the second reading of Ordinance Number 17-2025, an ordinance approving an intergovernmental agreement with Alamosa County for the conduct of the November 4th, 2025 coordinated election. So if we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments at this time, please come up to the podium and do so. Okay, I don't see anyone in the audience coming up to the podium, so now we'll go to the Zoom participants. And if you could, Ms. Martinez, give them instructions on how they can raise their hand to be recognized during this public hearing?
Yes, sir, if you want to speak for this public hearing, you'll use the raise hand feature on the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you're gonna dial star nine. Here, I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised, so I'll turn it back over to Council, Counselor Carson.
I move that we approve or adopt Ordinance 17-2025.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Public Hearing and Second Reading for Ordinance, Ordinance Number 18-2025, Amending the Established Pay Plan for City Officers and Employees.
Thank you, Mayor, we consider this a housekeeping item. In 2024, Council adopted an ordinance that adopted the new structure for our Utilities Division to help with some succession planning and making sure we have employees with the right certifications. For some reason, when we brought before you the ordinance in 2025 when we do pay increases as part of the budget, some of the titles got switched around and put them in positions that they were not intended to be in with that original adoption. So this is just an, an ordinance to correct that and, and to put the positions where they originally needed to be in the pay plan. There is an impact of about $7,446. Thank you.
Thank you. So now we will open up the public hearing and second reading for Ordinance Number 18-2025, amending the established pay plan for city officers and employees. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments during this public hearing, now is the time to do so. Please come to the podium. Okay, I don't see anyone making their way to the podium, so Ms. Martinez, once again, we'll open it up to the Zoom participants who may want to participate.
If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak, you'll use raise hand feature on the bottom of your screen, or if you're on a telephone, you'll dial star nine. I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand, Mayor.
Okay, I don't see any hands raised either, so we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to Council. Counselor Yanvi Hill?
Mayor, I move that we approve on second reading, Ordinance Number 18-2025.
I'll second.
We have a motion, second. Don't see any further discussion, please start voting. Ms. Martinez?
The motion carried unanimously.
Okay, thank you. Okay, looks like we have another one. Second reading and public hearing of Ordinance Number 16-2025, an ordinance annexing the Alamosa County Coroner's Building to the City of Alamosa.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hesbonwall.
As you stated, this is the second reading for an annexation ordinance. This is certainly a sensible annexation, which is for the Alamosa County Coroner's Building. Not to be too flippant, but given the current setting for the Alamosa Coroner, this is a much-needed improvement. The annexation is in compliance with all state statutes as well as our three-mile plan, and the proposed zoning district will be industrial, which is compatible with the adjacent uses, and staff fully recommends passing this ordinance.
Thank you. Okay, so-
Mayor, if I could, before we move to the public hearing, let me just add that we need to have the annexation agreement signed before this ordinance can be adopted. We do have a signed annexation agreement signed by Commissioner Vern Hearsink, but unfortunately, it was the signing of the sort of template draft one, and we needed to massage that a little bit. I have an email from City Attorney Jason Kelly indicating that he was going to get Commissioner Hearsink's signature on the revised one. I don't have it back yet, but I'm confident we can move forward. And just so the, the record notes, one of the issues was that our template annexation agreement assumes that there's been no construction on the property, whereas this, this building is almost complete. It was done under the county building codes and will be completed with a county certificate of occupancy.
Okay, thank you for that additional information, appreciate it. So we will now open up the public hearing for the Ordinance Number 16-2025, an ordinance annexing the Alamosa County Coroner's Building to the City of Alamosa. If we have anyone in the audience who would like to make any comments, please come up to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Richard Hubler, Land Use and Development Department Director for Alamosa County, here on behalf of the county. Thank you guys for considering our request. As, as the city attorney mentioned, we've been working on constructing this building. It's actually pretty much complete except for the utilities. We did a final inspection yesterday and issued a partial or a temporary certificate of occupancy pending the, the connection of the utilities. But the coroner is very, very excited about his new building, allows him to kind of move out of the Conex box that he's currently in at our facility shop, and it'll make it a much nicer facility for families. For those of you that haven't had to interact with the coroner currently, the county's been very pleased and impressed with his ability to kind of engage with a variety of different folks at the worst time of, of their lives, if they're dealing with, you know, kind of those that have passed. And so doing this in a professional facility is a huge upgrade for the community, we think. So we appreciate your support for this, thank you very much.
Thank you. If we have anyone else in the audience who would like to make any comments, please do so at this time before we go to Zoom. Okay, I don't see anyone coming to the podium, so now we'll go to the Zoom participants. Ms. Martinez, once again, if you don't mind.
Of course. If you're on the Zoom app and you want to speak for this public hearing, you'll use the raise hand feature on the bottom of your screen. If you're on a telephone, you're gonna dial star nine. Okay, Mayor, I don't see anyone choosing to raise their hand.
Okay, thank you. So we'll now close this public hearing and bring it back to Council. Counselor Yanvi Hill?
Mayor, just a question, because I truly don't know, is the coroner here tonight? No, no. Then I move that we approve on second reading, Ordinance Number 16-2025.
I'll second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. I don't see any other lights on for discussion. Please start voting. Ms. Martinez.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Society Hall Foundation Fee Waiver Request.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm here on behalf of Society Hall. They've submitted a letter requesting a building permit fee waiver. So I've included in my council communication a copy of the letter. And I'm here tonight to explain that it's one thousand forty one dollars, and it's to remodel their hundred and three year old building. So they're enclosing their front porch, they're making their front steps more ADA compliant. Um, and they're replacing their steps on the front. Um, they did submit this letter as a request. Staff is neutral on the request. We do see the merit in the fact that the city is working in district, in the fact that this is a music venue. Um, but for historical context, we generally, as a building department, do not approve fee waivers for projects that are outside of the scope of our comprehensive or our guiding plans. So when we think about the downtown hotel, it's in our downtown plan. When we talk about housing, it's in our comprehensive plan. And when we talk about childcare, it's also in our comprehensive plan. So those are our guiding documents in my department, and those are generally the basis by which we ask for building permit fee waivers. But I'm here to submit the request to council, and that's all I have.
Okay, do we have any uh, council uh, questions or comments? Councilor Carson.
So I agree about, you know, or or I understand the comprehensive plan piece of it. And uh, I I'm not at all a big fan of setting precedents at all. But, you know, seems like we're doing that. And so I would, I would, uh, I actually spoke to a performer uh, from Society Hall this morning. And um, he uh, he and I go way back to kids, and and he told me that he loves playing there. It's it's one of his favorite places to play. The acoustics are great. But beyond that, I I've, when I've been there, I see it as a really good community place to meet in general, just the feel, the the, you know, the whole deal there. And again, leading into the whole idea of having the creative district, I think that's gonna fall into that, whether we have it included in, you know, geographically or not. It would still be in that same, um, under that same umbrella, I think. So my suggestion is that, again, a against my better judgment about setting precedence, you know, I really think we should. I mean, I I think that's a drop in the bucket for what they're having to spend. That is a really cool building that's been there a long time, and um, it does a lot of good for the community. Like, people, it's a good meeting place. It's a, it's a really, it's a really awesome place to go. Um, so I, you know, I'm not at all opposed to waiving that. I think it's a a small gesture for what it does. But again, we will have to deal with people probably coming at us later because we're setting precedents. So just thinking about that. But I I I don't have an issue with with waiving it at all.
Thank you, Councilor Carson. Councilor Krebs.
Thank you, Mayor. I am for approving the waiver of this building permit fee. One of the things um in the process of creating a a creative district is recognizing the economic value that a music venue brings to the community. And I feel Society Hall has done a wonderful job in bringing a very high quality level of music to the community. And if this is a a small way of repaying that, I'm more than happy to to waive this, to be able to make that venue open for ADA compliance and for even more people to go and enjoy it. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Krebs. Uh, Councilor uh, Hensley and Councilor Yan V Hill.
I just give you a question. I can't figure what, do you have a comment? Yeah, go ahead.
Uh, sorry, thank you, Ms. Hensley. Is uh, Carson, you've talked about setting precedent. I've been thinking about that too all day about setting a precedent. I don't mind setting a precedent. It's it's the right thing to do. I know Society Hall has tried to um get on our our uh, our outside funding group list that we try to spread that money out that we will start talking here soon about in the budget season. They do a great job. They bring good music. Uh, they're open for everybody, and I think it's the right thing to do, and I don't mind setting precedent. So I will be voting in favor of this.
Councilor Hensley, and then Councilor Jackie V Hill.
I was gonna make a motion, so.
I think, I think I need to make a comment too.
Something I'll reach.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor. Um.
I'm in agreement. I mean, I think it's a good venue and it's inclusive of all the community, so I'm definitely in favor.
Okay, so I'll make my comment and feel free to make whatever motion you wanna make. Um, I appreciate everything that Society Hall has offered the community. I go there for their music as well as plays and different things that uh, takes place there, and I think is a very good venue. However, um, when it comes to setting precedents that could potentially undermine staff and staff's direction, I'm gonna be one to oppose us uh, moving uh, forward with uh, granting this waiver. Because as council, we have, and in our community, we have several nonprofit entities that do not fall within our scope of our comp plan. And wh- what this could be doing is setting staff up to where every time someone's a nonprofit, they have to come to council, and you all have to make that decision instead of uh, staff go going by their guiding document that they use. That could be very um, confusing, especially since I've told several nonprofit organizations up to date that we we don't waive fees uh, for nonprofits if they don't fall within the scope of our um, guiding principles, guiding documents, or comprehensive plan. So to me, if we move forward with this, you have to think about all the other organizations that are nonprofits that have come to maybe you all, like, they've come up to me and other staff, and we've told them no. So now how does that look now that we are making an exception to that rule? So I just want you all to be mindful. It's easy to get up here and say, oh, y'all set precedence. Oh, it's the right thing to do. But you have to really think about the consequences that uh, you could be bringing on not only uh, staff, but also council. So tho- those are my comments. Counselor uh, Carson.
I think, I think that's a very strange way to look at it, being that we've set precedence this week on things that, you know, that many members of the community aren't in agree with, agreeance with. So again, that was my whole statement about the precedence, and I understand what you're saying. Um, but, uh, you know, I I don't necessarily agree in this situation. I think if if we're gonna, we're gonna go down these roads of of people, you know, applying. I, and again, they have approached us in the past. Um, I think there was some deadline issues with applications as far as funding goes, but um, you know, I I think this does align with the values of our community, and we've just gone through this whole thing where that was a, an issue earlier. So I, you know, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve this ten forty one, um, you know, fee and waive it, that we approve the waiver for the ten forty one. Again, you know, I'm not a great fan of setting precedents, but I think you do sometimes have to make exceptions to the rule. There is always exceptions to the rule. And I believe this is one of those issues. And to Councilor Yan V Hill's point, um, if another organization were to approach us with a similar request that was as um, impactful on the community, I've, I would be, you know, of, I would of course consider it, just like other people do. And and Society Hall is very impactful on the community. So.
Second.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second. And uh, one final comment is uh, Steph, I just wanna encourage you to uh, continue doing the work that you're doing. And um, that's all you can do. All right, start voting.
Well, we didn't, you didn't call for a comment, Mayor.
Any further comment?
Yes, sir.
Wait, sir.
Well, just to dovetail off that that comment there. Our, our uh, expert is here. Do you get a lot of requests from nonprofits to do stuff like this?
N- I do wanna be clear that staff doesn't take a position on this. So when there's the recommend, recommended action, we recommended that council make the decision. So we're neutral. And we can field these requests at all times, but we do, as Mayor Coleman said, we do generally rely on one of two things. If you're not a nonprofit, we tell, we usually tell them that you have to have a, some sort of a project that's in our guiding documents. Um, and that you have to go before council, and that's the most common conversation we have.
And so I, I I respect that. How many of those do you have a year?
Maybe six or seven.
So not many.
I I do think this will probably, i- if it is a nonprofit box, I I do think there may be a change, which is why it's in my council communication. So I think that 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 might be something that does shift in the future, and staff will just deal with it as it comes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have any further discussion? Okay, please start voting. Ms. Martinez.
The motion carried five to one with Mayor Coleman casting the no vote.
Okay, thank you. That brings us to the next item on the agenda. Regular business, committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? Go ahead, Councilor Krebs.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I had a meeting with the Alamosa Housing Authority today. And so just two or three notes from that. They are in the middle of remodeling their units, and it's moving along very nicely. And then they are planning um, at the end of the month, an ice cream social for the residents. And they are also looking to start a tenant advisory board. So very exciting news coming up.
Thank you, Councilor Krebs. Councilor Hensley.
All right, so I had two. I was at the Visit Alamosa, or Alamosa County Tourism Board. Um, super excited cuz Sandra Hostetter is our new Welcome Center Director. And she is bringing a ton of energy. Um, super excited. Um, I think it's going to be a real plus to what's going on. Um, same time, we're continuing to work on our strategic plan, um, and the update. Uh, had updates on it, so it is in the middle. There's still uh, have surveys out there and calculating the data, so we're in the middle of that. I also had Main Street, and so on the Main Street, um, looking at the designation update, uh, basically, there was a meeting that day, and the next step is working together on a strategic plan. Uh, this is gonna probably happen in January sometime. There's also gonna be two half day meetings with the board and their technical team in January and February. So super excited, lots of great things going on there. Um, also, there was a um, I think people are seeing the importance, those small businesses in um, social and marketing. Uh, there were seven different businesses that are looking for interns and stuff to to do that. And so I think as people have been using them and seeing the, the posi- positivity of it. Um, so just, I I think some really good, exciting forward motion. Oh, and I'm sorry, one more thing is the Art Fest is September twelfth and the thirteenth, and so just reminding people of that.
Thank you, Councilor Hensley. Okay, um, up next, we have uh, staff announcements.
Thank you, Mayor. As Harry's making his way up, I will just remind you that we do have a joint city-county work session next Wednesday, the twenty seventh at six P M. It will be here in the council chambers and available through Zoom. Um, the topic of the joint work session is, um, as you might remember, when we held our public meeting on whether or not to keep St. Benedict, the sheriff had expressed concerns about homeless individuals and illegal camping out in the county. And um, what does enforcement look like and and those types of things. And so it will include our chief and sheriff, as well as the county commissioners and city council to talk about enforcement as it relates to um, homelessness. And Harry, I'll turn it over to you.
Really, just a quick update on a couple of projects we have going. Uh, Second Street is we're wrapping that up, the final, final stages of that. Um, the intention is to pave next week, um, completing the project, weather permitting. It looks like we have a little weather coming in this weekend, so um, hopefully be able to open that up to the public towards the end of next week. We'll follow up with some painting and cleaning up and stuff like that, but uh, another successful project, um, I'm pretty excited about it. Actually, it was bigger project than State Avenue. So um, it's good we could accomplish it all in one year. Um, the second project that we're getting ready to start is the alley activation project. And if you remember, or just to refresh your memory, it's cleaning up the the alleyways. This is between Main and Sixth Street, uh, between Edison and Hunt. Um, it's gonna be broken into two phases. We're gonna tackle the first phase here, starting in a couple of weeks. Refreshing and cleaning up the utilities, some of its replacement, working on the stormwater, um, and then we're gonna pave, pave the alleyways. A big part of it is the aesthetics and uh, making it a, you know, a friendly environment. Um, I think, Ma- uh, Mayor, you joined us on the Dola Grant um, presentation with Deacon, and so that's really what's funding it, and we're excited to get started here in the next couple of weeks. The the final phase we'll do um, next fall, late summer or fall, depending on the hotel. We gotta get them kind of in and out of that alleyway, and then once, once they're complete, we'll do that block and then the block where they're building the parking lot, so.
Councilor Carson.
Hey, Harry, can you remind me just, cuz I don't remember, what what are we doing or or I guess, is it's the school's responsibility, the school district's responsibility to clean up the parking lot across from the, the Boys and Girls Club headquarters, their new office, across from where Benway was, you know how we have that, the 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 torn down parking lot there now? You know what I'm talking about? Who, what are we?
Yeah, I'll let Heather address that one. Are you talking about where they're currently parking?
That's their property, the.
It's the school district's.
Yeah, they bought the building and then the property that's right next to it, that where the building was torn down. They own that property. That's their parking.
But just, were they planning on, is there anything planned with that? Probably not anytime near, in the near future, as far as the, the way the parking lot changes and the levels in there. Do you understand what I'm asking about?
I'm looking, I'm looking to Rachel to to see. I know we thought maybe there would be a little bit of cleanup of the parking lot, but the initial conversations, maybe they didn't recognize that, but I don't know if that's changed that, cuz I was quite a while ago.
Just because of this last, when we did the, the first Fridays that day, that's where I parked, and it's if you're in a car, you drive in there in a car, you're gonna you're gonna, you know, low car, you know, any new car, you're probably gonna trash it. But it's kind of beat up.
Don't kill the messenger, but you're, you're not supposed to park there.
Okay, no, I got you, and I knew, I saw that, you know, but it was overflowed and I was late, so I'm admitting to that, but.
Well, the police chief's in the back.
Yes, we know what we're gonna do at this point, but my thing is, is um, is there anything that's gonna be done with that at all?
So we don't think they plan on repaving it. I do think they're gonna restripe it. So our issue with that parking lot is mostly that they don't have enough spaces to support the number of enrolled students they wanted to have, the cap that we approved for them. So do you remember that whole debate? Yeah, so I do think restriping is probably in their future, but it is important to put the word out, and council's a good venue to do it, that people, because they're already so restricted on parking, that the public really can't be there. And so I do think they're probably gonna be pretty heavy handed about enforcing people not parking in their lot because they're short already. So, I mean, weekends, I don't know what, what the issue is, but people shouldn't just, shouldn't get habituated to parking there. So hopefully, it, it's just annoying for them personally.
It looks, it looks horrible. When you're driving by, you can see the brakes where the foundation was, and it's just, you know what I mean? The parking lot's pretty trash, so that was the only reason I thought about it was cuz of the standards.
The, the price tag of the building itself remodel is pretty steep, and so I, I feel like probably the school district will get to it eventually, but it's not something that we're asking them to do.
Thank you.
Hey, do we have any other um, staff now?
Oh, I have a question of.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, no, you're fine. I'm kinda like tucked to your side, so. Hi, Harry. I just have a question about the, the alley now that you're getting started with it. Um, since there's two alleyways, are you going to do all of part one to both, or are you just gonna focus on the one that's not the motel one first?
So we'll be focusing on Edison to San Juan, so the far west one. Behind like Southwest Bank, that there. So we'll, we'll do that this fall, and then the two remaining will be after the construction. It's, it's pretty much wrapped up.
Okay, thank you.
All right, no more staff announcements. Okay, we go to uh, council comments. Councilor Krebs.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
We heard a um lot of concerned citizens tonight, and I appreciate each and every one of you for taking your time to come out. It's a late evening, and I appreciate it. Um, I am in support of this. I feel I feel because when I feel that the city has taken. As many safety steps that we can possibly take and still remain within the law. Um, to protect children and their parents. But I think the caveat of the parents being with the child. Is so important because then the parents will be able to see and hear and meet other parents. That may have questions type thing. So I am actually proud of the fact that the city is serving as a safe space. For this event in the se- in the sense that it's a safe space. For questioning children and parents that also have questions around this. To, to meet each other and feel safe and protected in speaking to each other and asking questions. If it wasn't going to be here, it would have been elsewhere. That may not have been as safe. And so for that, I am thankful. And I will be also attending because I also want to learn the stories. And meet the parents and hear the questions. So um, that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Councilor Krebs, Councilor Hensley?
So what I would say, um, what I wanted to comment on is it's been a while since we've had this many. Um, concerned citizens come and give their opinions, things like that. And for me, that was really, people did it in a professional way. I really appreciated um everybody being, feeling comfortable be, to be able to say what their thoughts are. Um, obviously, um, I do feel that from a legal standpoint, things like that. Um, we're doing what we need to do and what we should be doing um at the library. There are times though, in my years that I've been up here, where when public comments happen, I truly listen. Today I listened, I've listened at other times where I've actually changed my point of view um by what I've heard. And so I just, I guess what I really wanna do is encourage. Um, everybody here that loves and cares about Alamosa to continue to come forward and tell, say what they feel. And what they think because it really does make a difference.
Okay, do we have any other comments? Councilor Carson?
I, I, I really don't wanna comment on this just because I don't feel that this is um. I don't, I'm not in support of this. I, I'm just not. I'll, you know, I'll be frank. I, I have, I have many family members that are L G B Q T plus. And um several of them aren't in support of it, you know what I mean? And, and, and that's just the reality. I mean, the, you know. You wanna talk about there, there is no sexuality or anything like that involved, but that's not true. These books are, are, that they're gonna read there do have those innuendos. And I, and I, as of the father of, you know, two older daughters and a young son. I, I mean, you know, when they were young, when my daughters were young, I would have found it strange anybody reading to them. You know what I mean? That wasn't familiar to them or a teacher. And so just from that standpoint, I, I don't, you know, feel necessarily comfortable. Um, and I understand parents are gonna be there. And, and that's great, but it also makes me worry about like, you know, we're talking about freedom of choice and, and, you know. Kids and, you know, who gives the kids their choice? They're, you know, they're, they're being taken there and. They're being introduced to materials that um. Are, are adult in nature and they have an adult leaning theme that, that was created through, through, you know. Uh, political. Political agendas, I guess, is, is the way I look at it. Um. I've always seen Alamosa as a welcoming town for everybody, like everyone. I've, I've never, you know, I had conversations two weeks ago. With people that were concerned that it wasn't welcoming. That's not true at all. We've come through a lot, this town. This town is very inclusive of everybody. You know, and, and I say that as a, as a, you know, white-looking person who's Hispanic, who didn't speak English until he was eight. Seven years old, you know what I mean? And it's frustrating me to see, for me to see people come up here and, and be so concerned about. The values of the community and I'm, I'm kinda rambling because I'm, 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 you know, a little annoyed. The fact is, is that decisions like this should be talked about in a public forum. And I feel like it was kinda just thrown at us cuz of the legalities. And I bring into question the legalities of the books they're reading and the, the, you know, the child protection laws that they talked about at the state level as well. And were those vetted by our attorney? And, and so I'm curious about that because the books that they're reading. Are, are open to interpretation as well. And so I just think exposing small children especially, if you wanna talk about sexual innuendos, thirteen, fourteen, eleven even. Is, is already, you know, a more mature age, but when you're talking about three, four, or five-year-olds that are being exposed to this. You're, you're burning stuff in their brain. You know, you're, you're, you're setting it in there. And as a dad of a four-year-old little boy, I don't feel comfortable with this. You know, and so I just want that to be stated out there. I'm not, you know, and I understand the legalities and I have no issue with. My own people because I have a lot of, like I said, people who are gay in my family. And the day of that meeting, the funny thing is, is the day of that meeting. I asked one, I said, so what do you think I should say tonight? You know, what, what do you think my angle should be? How, how do I approach this? And their response was, Dad, because it's my daughter, they want attention. And that's what's pissing me off. That's what's pissing me off. This has been a polarizing issue throughout the country. And there was no need for it at the library. It was fine last year at the brewery. Nobody cared. It's an adult place. You wanna take your kids there, it's a restaurant, that's fine. Bringing it to the library is what brought the controversy. And I heard the conversations last week and that's the reason they're doing it. And that's what's annoying me. Is it's not done because of inclusivity, because Alamosa's a pretty inclusive town already. It's done to start controversy. And that's why it was done. In, in this particular instance, I, I, I feel that's why it was done. And. That's what's frustrating me. You know, it's fine. There's a lot of public venues here. They could have done it anywhere. But the statement from one of the people doing it was, we feel it needs to be done now at this time. That's a political statement, not an inclusivity statement. And that's why I'm annoyed. And, and I just felt that I owed at least the people that came to speak out against it that because, ah, you know, um. This is a. Super close to home. This actually causes problems for people that are gay. I've seen people get accosted cuz they're gay because of things like this happening in their community. And it actually brings, it actually brings. It, it, it puts more pe- people that are gay in a, in a light that they don't wanna be portrayed in. And that's what's frustrating to me. You talk to people that are not drag queens, not people that are involved in this show, but other people that are gay in this community. When, when they're treated that way. You're putting a lot of people at, at risk. You know, it's frustrating because I've, I've dealt with this for a long time and uh. You know, the word that came out of, out of the, the transgender person that's in my life's mouth was indoctrination. And that's what scares me. And if I don't stand here and speak out the way these people talked about, you know, you, you talk about God a lot and the Bible. And that's what's frustrating me here. You can't be hypocritical. I have a gay child. I have gay people in my life. And their lifestyle is their choice. They wanna do what they, I'm gonna love them either way. But when you're creating controversial events that put them in danger, that brings it home. And it's, it's frustrating, especially when they're doing it for, for political reasons. Excuse me, I'm just pissed. I didn't wanna deal with this. And this is the frustrating things that we have to deal with as counselors up here for the city. We don't get paid to do this. You know what I mean? It's, 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 we get our, we get our butt kicked up here sometimes for no reason. There was no reason to, to bring this to, to the library at all. Just controversy. And that's what's frustrating. That's why I'm so mad. And I'm sorry, I apologize, but this is pretty frustrating. You know what I mean? That, that's, that's, you know, you put a target on yourself even if you say anything about it. I always go back to that meme of the guy saying, oh, no, no, I don't wanna speak cuz if I do, I'll be in trouble. And, and that sucks. And, and you know, and, and, and. That's what's frustrating me. I don't care about the drag queen story time. You can do what you want. But bringing it to a public venue just to cause controversy was. It just wasn't necessary, you know? That's my opinion. And that's where, that's where I stand. And I'm sorry, I, I'm not trying to offend anybody and, and, and. You know, it's, it's just close to home. And I don't wanna put my kids in danger or I don't want my daughter in danger, you know? For, because of controversy. And that's what it does. I mean, I've been literally put in this situation where, where she was trying to. Understand who she was. And crap like this put her in danger. I'm sorry. You, you gotta be there. And if you're not there and you haven't been there, you don't know where I'm going to. So it's easy to judge and look back and sit, you know, and, and wonder, but if you're not there and, and you're doing this, again, a grown person, a man or woman, reading to a kid that isn't theirs. Unless you're their teacher or whatever, just, especially a book about sexuality and all. I'm sorry. That's where I stand.
Okay, do we have any other council comments? Okay, I don't see any other lights on. This meeting is adjourned.